This government meeting is brought to you by Eastworks and our local cable subscribers.
Good evening. Welcome to the Sampson City Council for meeting for Wednesday, February 15. The meeting tonight is being recorded and broadcast by eMedia on Charter, Channel 193, and live streaming on their eMedia website. All councilors and participants in this meeting are gathering hybrid of the executive order by the former Governor Baker extended to March 2023, which allow us to do so. I remind both the members of the city council and the public remain mute under recognized by the city council president. Also, for the members of the public, please remove your camera for the duration of the meeting unless you are participating in public speak time or public hearing. Thank you. Now this minute is called to order. Barbara?
Connie Denham?
Here.
Salem Derby?
Present.
Omar Gomez?
Here.
JP Kuzinski?
Here.
David Munier? Tom Peak?
Here.
Brad Riley?
Here.
Dan Rist?
Here.
Owen Zera?
Here.
Please stand up for the presidential.
The United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, individual with liberty and justice for all.
I will take a motion to approve the minute from last meeting.
Some of them still moved?
We have a-
Second?
Not fast enough.
We have a motion and a second to approve the minute for the last meeting. Any further discussion? Seeing none. Barbara?
Connie Denham?
Hi.
Salem Derby?
Hi.
Omar Gomez?
Hi.
JP Kuzinski?
Aye.
Tom Peak?
Aye.
Brad Riley?
Aye.
Dan Rist?
Aye.
Owen Zera?
Aye.
Motion passes. Public speak time. This is the opportunity for the public to participate in the public speak time, talking to the, um, please, any, this is the opportunity to address to the council regarding any topic, not least on the public hearing. Is anyone from the public that want to participate and have anything to say to the council? This is the time to talk. You have three minutes and please be respectful to the council. Because I see new people coming to the meeting. This is, uh, public speak time. Is anyone from the public that want to participate at the public speak time? This is the time to talk. Um, I will allow you to participate. I will give you three minutes and please address to the council and be respectful. Is anyone from the public who want to participate? Anyone from the people who's participating remote? Seeing none. Communication for elected official boards and committee. Any city council have anything tonight? Counselor Sarret?
Just two things, Mr. President. First of all, we're all aware of what happened in Michigan the other day. I don't have to comment too much on that, but I definitely urge the council to consider some language around this ongoing issue of gun violence in the country. Um, on March 2nd at 6:00 PM in these chambers, there will be a informational meeting by the Conway School on their Polina Action Plan project. I urge people to attend. It'd be very interesting to see the results of the project that they've been working on, which I think we'll dovetail into some other items environmentally related that are going on the city. And that's it.
Thank you, Counselor Sarret. Any other counselors? Seeing none. Major's Communication and then Mayor?
No.
No. Correspondent from President or Vice President, Mr. Vice President, you have anything? I do have an announcement. This Friday at the chamber, we're going to have the Black Heroes Panel. That event will start at 5:30. The open is going to be, uh, the door, the door is going to be open at 5:00 PM. We, um, the event is going to have six, seven members from the community, including a police officer. He's going to be here this Friday. Please support this event. Uh, we say a lot about black history and how much we support the black community. This is a good event to show that. Um, beside that, I don't have anything else. And it's 6:04. Report from standing committees. Finance, Counselor Rist.
Thank you, Mr. President. Uh, we met last week and we did approve the appropriations which are coming forward this evening under public hearings. Our next meeting will be February 22nd at 5:15 in Conference Room One, where we'll be discussing the appropriations that have, are coming forward today under new business. I would like to, uh, the Finance Committee voted to remove the quarterly reports on COVID-19 grant funding since the emergency is about to be done and we felt comfortable doing so at this time. So I'm going to make a motion that the council remove from the Finance Committee's agenda the quarterly reports on COVID-19 grant funding and spending.
Second.
We have a motion and a seconds to remove the quarterly report on COVID-19 grant funding and spending. Any further discussion? Seeing none. Barbara?
Salem Derby?
Aye.
Omar Gomez?
Aye.
JP Kuzinski?
Aye.
Tom Peak?
Aye.
Brad Riley?
Aye.
Dan Rist?
Aye.
Owen Zera?
Aye.
Connie Denham?
Aye.
Motion passes. Counselor Rist?
Uh, that concludes, Mr. President.
Thank you, Counselor. Public Safety, Counselor Sarret?
Uh, we have not met since our last meeting. We are meeting on February 28th at 6:00 PM with a report from the Police Department. And that concludes.
Thank you, Counselor Sarret.
Sorry.
Appointment, Counselor Riley?
Thank you, Mr. President. Um, we have not met since the last meeting. However, there will be new business before the committee, so we will meet on February 23rd at 6:00 PM in the basement, Conference Room B. And thus concludes.
At 6:00 PM?
6:00 PM.
Yes.
6:00 PM, right?
Yes.
Ordnance, Counselor Derby?
Uh, thank you, Mr. President. We have a meeting coming up on Tuesday, February 21st at 6:00 PM in Conference Room One, and we will be discussing, um, the pay plan amendments. And that is all we will be discussing. Um, so I do have two public hearings that I would like to set. Um, I would like to set a public hearing, um, for those amendments to the pay plan for, uh, March 15th at 6:15 in these chambers.
A second.
We have a motion and a seconds to schedule a public hearing about the amendment of the city ordinance, Chapter Seven, for March 15, right?
Yep.
6:15 in this chamber. Any further discussion? Seeing none. Barbara?
Omar Gomez?
Aye.
JP Kuzinski?
Aye.
Tom Peak?
Aye.
Brad Riley?
Aye.
Dan Rist?
Aye.
Owen Zera?
Aye.
Connie Denham?
Aye.
Salem Derby?
Aye.
Motion passes. Counselor Derby?
Thank you, Mr. President. Uh, I'd also like to set a public hearing, um, for April 5th at 6:15 in these chambers, uh, for the vacant storefront ordinance.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to set a public hearing for the vacant storefront ordinance, uh, for April 5th, uh, 6:15 in this chamber. Any further discussion? Seeing none. Barbara?
JP Kuzinski?
Aye.
Tom Peak?
Aye.
Brad Riley?
Aye.
Dan Rist?
Aye.
Owen Zera?
Aye.
Connie Denham?
Aye.
Salem Derby?
Aye.
Omar Gomez?
Aye. Motion passes. Counselor Derby?
Thank you, Mr. President. Um, just as an update, uh, we will be discussing, um, the safe and fair access to legally protected reproductive and gender-affirming healthcare services, uh, at a future meeting. Uh, we will set that meeting at our, um, meeting next Tuesday. Um, and so I should be able to announce that at our next council meeting. Thus concludes.
Thank you, Counselor Derby. Property, Counselor Kuzinski?
Uh, no report, Mr. President.
Thank you, Counselor. Rules, Counselor Rist?
Thank you, Mr. President. We'll be meeting on February 23rd at 5:15 in Conference Room One. We will continue our discussions on charter amendments. Um, I hope to really get into, uh, committee members and others interested, the, uh, vacancy of the mayor charter amendment. This is a complicated one and I'd like, I'd like to get, get that really, uh, into that. Secondly, we will try to conclude our ordinance for a committee, uh, which is for the biodiversity climate committee. I forget the name of it, but it's what we're going to finalize. We've got really close on that. Thank you, Mr. President. That concludes.
Thank you, Counselor Rist. It's not 6:15 yet. I know, we're going to do new business. Counselor, uh, Mr. Vice President?
Uh, thank you, Mr. President. Um, I have, uh, two mayoral appointments, uh, for Nancy Deruko and Robert Ferris. Um, the first to the Commission on Disability, 1231, 2024, and Robert Ferris to the ZBA, uh, 1231, 2025. I'd like to move those two appointments.
Second.
We have a motion and a seconds to move to the mayoral, mayoral appointment to the appointments committee. Any further discussion? Seeing none. Barbara?
Tom Peak?
Aye.
Brad Riley?
Aye.
Dan Rist?
Aye.
Owen Zera?
Aye.
Connie Denham?
Aye.
Salem Derby?
Aye.
Omar Gomez?
Aye.
JP Kuzinski?
Aye.
Motion passes. I do receive, um, and we have a memo from the John Mason, Department of Rec. Director. He attached at, um, on the agenda, a resolution. Uh, we have John Mason on the call. I don't know if you want to add something or any other councilor have any question before we vote for the resolution, but it's something that already, uh, we already vote before. This is just a procedural thing that we have to do, but, um, I have, uh, again, uh, Mr. Mason is on the call. I don't know if you want to add something. I know he's in another meeting too, so. I know he's here. Anyway, any councilor have any questions about the resolution? No? Want to read it? Mr. Vice President?
Uh, the LWCF Park Development Project, City Council Resolution, a resolution to file and accept grants with and from the Commonwealth of Massachusetts Executive Office of Energy and Environmental Affairs for the Land and Water Conservation Fund Grant Program for Improvements to Non-Tuck Park Pool. Whereas the Non-Tuck Park Pool is by far a community-wide asset and the preservation improvements of this facility are a city priority as evidenced in the most recent open space and recreation plan. And whereas the Non-Tuck Park Pool is dedicated to park and recreation purposes under MGL Chapter 45, Section 3. And whereas the Non-Tuck Pool, Park Pool, Ultimate Restoration Guided in Principle by the Master Plan will greatly enhance this facility with improved infrastructure, provide shade, increase recreational opportunities, climate resiliency, municipal access, et cetera. And whereas the main focus of the plan is to renovate the Non-Tuck Pool and surrounding area to provide swimming and activities for everyone to enjoy. Whereas the Executive Office of Energy and Environmental Affairs is offering reimbursable grants to cities and towns to support the preservation and restoration of urban parks through the Land and Water Conservation Fund, um, Act, PL 88-578-78STAT-897. And whereas the Non-Tuck Park Pool Restoration Project will cost a total of 1.203,105, uh, $1,203,105. And the CPA has allocated $190,000, park grant $400,000. And the city has allocated 1.203,105 in funds for the Non-Tuck Park Pool Restoration Project. Now therefore be it resolved, one, that the mayor be and is hereby authorized to file and accept grants from the Executive Office of Energy and Environmental Affairs. And two, the mayor be and is hereby authorized to take such other actions as are necessary to carry out the terms, purposes, and conditions of this grant to be administered by the Parks and Recreation Department. And this resolution shall take effect upon passage.
Second.
We have a motion and a second for the Land and Water Conservation Fund ground resolution. Any further discussion? Seeing none. Barbara?
Brad Riley?
Aye.
Dan Rist?
Aye.
Owen Zera?
Aye.
Connie Denham?
Aye.
Salem Derby?
Aye.
Omar Gomez?
Aye.
JP Kuzinski?
Aye.
Tom Peak?
Aye.
Motion passes.
I think we should start.
No.
Um- Take me a while.
Counselor Rist?
Okay, we have 15 supplemental appropriations. Please be patient with me. Um, I am going to read the first group, which is not in the order that is appearing on your agenda. This is a priority order given to me by the DPW and the President. Uh, they are the ones we, he would like us to pass first. When I conclude sending them to finance, I will also set a March 1st public hearing. So as a first reading, we have a supplemental appropriation of $60,000 to be transferred from Enterprise retained earnings to be transferred to fiscal year 23 water meters for the purpose of the Water Division. Replaces approximately 250 water meters annually. Cost per meter varies based on size and type. A standard residential sized meter with integrated radio reading capability is approximately $250. Second supplemental appropriation, um, is a $78,068.34 appropriation to be transferred from Enterprise retained earnings, $78,068.34, to be transferred to Union Street Sewer Repair, $78,068.34. The appropriation provide funding to cover the cost of an emergency sewer line replacement and relocation between Payson Avenue and Union Street. The next supplemental appropriation is the amount requested is $120,000 to be transferred from Capital Stabilization, $120,000, to be transferred to FY23 Ford 350 trucks, $120,000. The appropriation will fund replacement of two trucks in the Highway Division that are 15 years old. The next appropriation is a $4,701.68 appropriation to be transferred from Free Cash, $4,701.68, to be transferred to FY22 Snow and Ice and Salt, $4,701.68. This appropriation will fund payment of an outstanding invoice from Morton Salt that was not sent prior to the fiscal year 2022 closing. The next supplemental appropriation, the amount requested is $65,000, $65,000 to be transferred from Free Cash, $65,000, to be transferred to the fiscal year 23 Highway Professional Services Account, $65,000. For the following purpose, the appropriation will provide funding for disposal of a backlog of street sweepings that have been stockpiled in the Highway Department. The next supplemental appropriation is $22,500 to be transferred from Enterprise retained earnings, $22,500, to be transferred to, uh, in from Enterprise Emerald Place Resiliency Account, $22,500. This appropriation provide grant fund, match funding for the MVP Emerald Place Slope Stabilization Project. The next appropriation is, uh, for $100,000 to be transferred from Free Cash, $100,000, to be transferred to the DPW Fuel Account, $100,000. The appropriation will provide funding to overcome volatility in gas and diesel fuel pricing for fiscal year 23. And the last for this section, the amount is $25,000 to be transferred from Free Cash, $25,000, to be transferred to Building Operations Full Time, $25,000. The appropriation provide funding to hire a full-time building custodian for the Council on Aging and City Hall. Mr. President, I move that the, the eight aforementioned appropriations be sent to Finance Committee for review and that a public hearing be set for March 1st for these appropriations at 6:15 in these chambers.
Second.
We have a motion and a second for the eight supplemental appropriations to send it to the Finance Committee and schedule a public hearing March 1st at 6:15 in this chamber. Any further discussion? Seeing none. Barbara?
One, just one quick question. Um, so for the $120,000 for the replacement of two trucks in the Highway Division, um, is there a requirement that these two vehicles be electric when they're purchased?
That's part of, uh, that's not part of the motion.
Okay.
Uh, because the motion is only to move it to the, to the committee.
All right.
That's part of the deliberation about the item and we can answer that right now.
Perfect. Thank you.
Sorry. Barbara?
Dan Rist?
Aye.
Owen Zera?
Aye.
Connie Denham?
Aye.
Salem Derby?
Aye.
Omar Gomez?
Aye.
JP Kuzinski?
Aye.
Tom Peak?
Aye.
Brad Riley?
Aye.
Do you want me to continue?
Motion passes. Um, we're going to open a public hearing now, but let me answer, you can bring that, um, that question to the, to the Finance Committee?
Yep.
And they will answer you at the time.
Perfect. Thank you.
I will take a motion to open a public hearing.
It's a move.
Second.
Uh, we have a motion and a second to open a public hearing. Um, any further discussion? Seeing none. Barbara?
Owen Zera?
Aye.
Connie Denham?
Aye.
Salem Derby?
Aye.
Omar Gomez?
Aye.
JP Kuzinski?
Aye.
Tom Peak?
Aye.
Brad Riley?
Aye.
Dan Rist?
Thank you, Mr. President. Oh, I'm sorry.
You didn't, you didn't vote.
Oh. Aye.
Motion passes.
I see.
Counselor Rist?
Sorry. Thank you, Mr. President. Uh, we have some appropriations this evening from Free Cash. First thing I want to do is alert the public and the council to the amount of free cash we have. The free cash was certified at $5,9212. Now, this is the largest amount of free cash that I can recall in my 27 years on the council. Why is that? It is quite unusual primarily because our wonderful auditor was able to reclassified American Rescue Act and state pandemic funds allowed for department expenses due to the fact that if she did not do this, they would have expired and we would have lost the funds. And I'm going to ask Hadal to come in if I've made, if I misunderstand any of this. This created a large amount of unexpended city funds in main, in the department budgets, which then become part of Free Cash. This will not happen again as we don't have those pandemic funds anymore. And it is doubtful that we'll ever have that kind of, uh, amount available to us. Also retained earnings, which is the enterprise funds quote-unquote Free Cash account, has $2,030,359 certified for this year. Um, any questions about where Free Cash came from? Hadal's here to answer them. Did I do that right, Hadal?
Yes, you did.
Oh, boy, I'm so excited. I- Okay, so-
Any councilor have any question?
So the first appropriation is $3 million. Um, because we have so much, we're going to put these, this $3 million into our stabilization accounts. Now, what are stabilization accounts? For the public, these are our savings accounts, rainy day funds. Um, and they do not turn over at the end of the fiscal year. They remain in their accounts. Whereas all the other accounts, the department budgets, even unexpended Free Cash, et cetera, turns over and has to be recertified, these stay. And these savings accounts, when I say rainy day, the general stabilization account would be used in the event that we had a recession like we had in 2008. I've been talking about this every time we save money. With this kind of money in our stabilization accounts, it would protect us from the massive layoffs we had in that, in the last recession. With this, um, with these three stabilizations, we have the following. In general stabilization, after the 1.2 million, we will have $5,988,478.90 in general stabilization. After, uh, the 1.5 million is approved this evening, we will have $4,327,566.10 in capital stabilization. And in tax rate stabilization, we will have $453,122.89. One of the questions that I brought up and, or was asked at the Finance Meeting about capital stabilization is, why now? Why not use some of that funds for, in Free Cash to purchase, say, a lot of vehicles, which we do often. The mayor is intending to use a fleet type of, uh, procedure in looking at these. And I'd like to, if you have the mayor to explain that for us. This would allow the, uh, city to look at electrifying as many vehicles as possible in a, from all departments, as I understood it that evening. Mayor, did I get that right, if you want to?
If we're going to talk about the, the, why we're moving the money to that account, yes. If we are going to move, if we, the discussion is about buying fleet cars, no, because that's not the topic that we have in the agenda.
The reason I asked for the creation of the stabilization account.
And that's fine. That's what I'm saying. Like, if, if we're talking about, if we're talking about why we are moving this for the capital stabilization account and the reason is because of that, yes. If we are talking about just because of the cars, no.
Understood. Uh, the move to the stabilization account is an overall efficiency move where we can, in many different areas of, uh, city government, uh, do very specific, uh, capital purchases and improvements over a course of time that are more known in more specific detail of what the city should be doing long-term for a whole bunch of other things.
Thank you. Any councilor have any questions? Counselor Sarret?
Thank you, Mr. President. Uh, this makes sense to me, but just also to clarify for me, um, as a relatively new-ish counselor and just for the public. So typically when we see a lot of our appropriations, they come from Free Cash, but appropriations can be made from some of these stabilization accounts for purchases. Is that correct?
That's correct. And, Counselor-
They can be. They require six votes to be moved out. Um, one of the reasons you do it is to protect against deficiencies in budget, for instance, but also in the event that we have a lack of aid from the state. If you recall, the state funds a great deal of our budget, both the local aid for our regular budget and especially Chapter 70 for our schools. If we lose that aid, this is where we can get it. Now, just to clarify, general stabilization is where that would come from. Capital stabilization can only be used for capital projects and capital expenses. Um, the other thing to say, which I'll repeat constantly, is when bonding companies see that we have these savings accounts, especially even in capital stabilization, they know that if, uh, we'll talk about it later, a fire engine goes down, that's a lot of money. But we have that money in our account. So the bonding companies give us a good rating when we go out to bond for things like schools. And when we do that with a good rating, we save a tremendous amount of dollars in interest. We're talking millions. So the taxpayers like it, should like that we have these savings. And I compliment our financial team and the mayor for always looking to save this kind of funds.
Thank you, Counselor Rist. I'll answer your question.
Yes, I did. Thank you.
Any other counselor? Anyone from the public that want to participate only for this particular supplemental appropriation? This is the time to participate. Anyone from the public that have any questions or comment or concerns about this appropriation? Seeing none. Counselor Rist?
I move that the following supplemental appropriation be approved by the full council. The amount requested is $3 million. That request is coming from Free Cash, $3 million. Two, general stabilization, $1,200,000. Two, capital stabilization, $1,500,000. Two, tax rate stabilization, $300,000. To fund general stabilization to provide stability in the current environment, to fund capital stabilization to meet capital needs, and to fund the tax rate stabilization to help reduce the impact of debt exclusions on the tax rate. Second.
We have a motion and a seconds for the supplemental provision of $3 million for Free Cash to the general capital and tax rate stabilization funds. Any further discussion? Seeing none. Barbara?
Connie Denham?
Aye.
Salem Derby?
Aye.
Omar Gomez?
Aye.
JP Kuzinski?
Aye.
Tom Peak?
Aye.
Brad Riley?
Aye.
Dan Rist?
Aye.
Owen Zera?
Aye.
Motion passes. Counselor Rist?
I'm going to, uh, at the Chief Alberdi's request, move up the 73,000 to discuss it now. We have a supplemental appropriation of $73,390.70 from Free Cash. This is our first Free Cash. Well, it's not our first one. We just did one. Anyway, this, this is a Free Cash for the department. All of these requests are contract-based. We have a contract that allows for the payment off of retirement of, of our, one of our officers. I won't, I won't butcher his name, but-
Apologetic.
Apologetic is retiring. Uh, also, we have new recruits that need, uh, equipment, clothing, et cetera, all of which are required under our collective bargaining agreement. And for the public's sake, the new recruits are replacing, uh, retirees and by attrition, there is no increase in staffing in the Police Department, but these recruits require, uh, the clothing, equipment, and tuition. Chief is here to answer any questions.
Chief?
Good evening, Counselors.
You want to add something?
I'm sorry?
You want to add something before councilor have any questions?
Um, I can answer questions. I think, uh, one thing I'll point out is one of the, um, appropriations is for a bill, a medical bill that came in after the fiscal year closed.
My fault.
No, that's okay. Um, it's a, it's a significant amount of money, but it was, um, one of our officers was hospitalized after getting bit by a raccoon. So we had rabies shots, the whole-
Any-
It came in late.
Any councilor have any questions about this appropriation? No? Anyone from the public want to participate in this supplemental appropriation to the Police Department? Seeing none. Counselor Rist?
I move that the full council approve this supplemental appropriation for $73,390.70 I move that the full council approve a supplemental appropriation for $73,390.70 to be transferred from free cash, $73,390.70 to be transferred to the following accounts. Police base salary, $48,132.24. Police medical expenses, $2,175. Police uniform expenses, $7,323. Police education and training, $6,400. And FY '22 old medical bill, $9,360.46 for the purpose to cover the payout of DLT Poplar Chik's retirement effective July 16, 2022. The cost of sending two recruits to the police academy, medical exams, mandatory clothing, equipment, and tuition, uniform expenses for one new hire, and the cost of a FY '22 old medical bill dated 9/14/21.
Second.
Second.
We have a motion and a seconds to approve the supplemental appropriation of $73,390.70 for the, for the police department retirement, new hire expenses, and for the fiscal year 2022, medical bills. Any further discussion? Seeing on, Barbara.
Salem Derby.
Aye.
Omar Gomez.
Aye.
JP Kuzinski.
Aye.
Tom Peak.
Aye.
Brad Riley.
Aye.
Dan Rist.
Aye.
Owen Zaret.
Aye.
Connie Dunham.
Aye.
Motion passes. Councilor Rist?
The next appropriation is for, thank you, the next appropriation is for legal expenses, $20,000. This is because our legal requirements have been close to being expended for the current fiscal year. We have a lot of projects, as you all know, that need legal services. We also have negotiated collective bargaining contracts. This $20,000 is not simply for our city attorney, but involves our entire attorney needs, labor attorneys, et cetera. This is the mayor's appropriation, so if you have any questions, they should be directed to the mayor, Mr. President.
Yes.
Anybody, I'm done.
Any councilor have any questions about this appropriation? The mayor, you want to add something to this appropriation? No? Okay. Any, anyone from the public want to participate in this supplemental appropriation? Seeing on, councilor Rist.
I move that the full council approve a supplemental appropriation of $20,000 to be transferred from free cash, $20,000, to be transferred to the legal account, $20,000. The amount requested will be used for the following purpose, expended legal budget for the current fiscal year.
Second.
We have a motion and a second for the supplemental appropriation of $20,000 to supplement the fiscal year 2023 legal services budget. Any further discussion? Seeing on, Barbara.
Omar Gomez.
Aye.
JP Kuzinski.
Aye.
Tom Peak.
Aye.
Brad Riley.
Aye.
Dan Rist.
Aye.
Owen Zaret.
Aye.
Connie Dunham.
Aye.
Salem Derby.
Aye.
Motion passes, councilor Rist.
The last supplemental appropriation is for the fire department. There's a number of items on it. Miscellaneous professional and technical services for the EMS billing agency. You all know that we, the fire department does bill out our EMS billing and the chief mentioned that they bring in over a million dollars. I forget the figure, if you need that. One of our firemen is here to answer your questions, but they bring in a great deal of revenue and that revenue has to be dealt with through a billing agency. Also, they talked about supplies on ambulances. They have exceeded a great cost due to the supply problems we have in this country. I think he mentioned that a box of gloves that costs, I'm going to use figures that aren't real, but a hundred dollars now costs a thousand dollars. It's like that. It's exceeding and they have to pay for those. There are maintenance agreements for EMS equipment. There's sick leave incentive because of the retirement of Dave Safran. This is based on contract. Repairs to vehicles, we have a 2003 fire engine that needs some work. I just want to mention that. And also ladder one, bucket and aerial platform needs work. These are very old fire engines and we will be looking to see them replaced soon. We have firefighter equipment that needs to be purchased. And one of the things that struck me, which is very sad, but necessary, is some of the calls the paramedics go out require them to get ballistic protection equipment. That's sad, that's bulletproof vests, everybody. And they need to be safe, just like our police officers. They also have some building repairs in our building that need repair. So there's a lot of items here. Do you have any questions?
We have deputy chief Benson, if you want to add something?
President, I can't come up here. I don't have anything to add, councilor Rist, you did a great job. So I'm just here if anybody has any questions.
Any councilor have any question, councilor Zaret?
Just a quick statement as chair of public safety, who obviously had take interest in these appropriations. The first two items, the professional technical services and EMS supplies, those to some degree are good problems to have. I think the chair touched on it, but because the EMS revenue is close to 1.4 million dollars?
This year, we're expecting 1.4 million, last year was 1.2, yes, sir.
So that we use a billing service that takes a certain percentage of all of our revenue and so it's because EMS revenue has been so significant over the last few years that that's there. And then in terms of EMS supplies, not just the cost, but also again the volume of, of calls. So this is, you know, it's, oh, it's, it's not great to have to put out, shell out more money, but there's more money coming in. And also, and I can't remember the city, but, but the, I spoke with the chief yesterday and there is some regionalization here going on too, we're sharing purchasing, but is it, is it Westfield or West Springfield?
Westfield Fire Department is kind of collaborated with them in terms of their bid for billing so that we can acquire supplies at a little less cost.
So just mostly just to reinforce the fact that these are directly proportional to the fact that our call volumes have increased substantially as, as our EMS revenue, so that's all.
Thank you, councilor. Any other councilor? Anyone from the public that want to participate in this supplemental appropriation? Seeing on, councilor Rist.
Mr. President, I move the supplemental appropriation be approved by the full council. The amount is $194,000 to be transferred from free cash, $194,000 to the following accounts. Miscellaneous professional and technical services, $25,000. EMS supplies, $35,000. Maintenance agreements, $13,000. Education, $3,500. Sick leave buyback, $38,000. Repairs to vehicles, $35,000. Equipment, $37,000. And building repairs, $7,500. For the purposes of third-party billing agency costs for EMS revenue collections, costs for supplies on ambulances, service contracts for EMS equipment as required by state ambulance license, education contracts for requirement for tuition reimbursement, costs for sick leave buyout for retirement of Dave Safran, repairs to vehicles, work needed on 2003 engine one to bring it into safety standards and ladder one controls and bucket and aerial platform, firefighting equipment, purchase of new gear for two new firefighters being hired, and a replacement of ballistic protection equipment, building repairs, installation of locks on doors, diesel exhaust removal system, annual service and annual service vision 21 system and fire dispatch.
Second.
We have a motion and a seconds to approve $194,000 for various fire department personal and expenses appropriations. Any further discussion? Seeing on, Barbara.
JP Kuzinski.
Aye.
Tom Peak.
Aye.
Brad Riley.
Aye.
Dan Rist.
Aye.
Owen Zaret.
Aye.
Connie Dunham.
Aye.
Salem Derby.
Aye.
Omar Gomez.
Aye. Motion passes. I will take a motion to close public hearing.
So move, second.
We have a motion and a second to close public hearing and further discussion. Seeing on, Barbara.
Uh, Tom Peak.
Aye.
Brad Riley.
Aye.
Dan Rist.
Aye.
Owen Zaret.
Aye.
Connie Dunham.
Aye.
Salem Derby.
Aye.
Omar Gomez.
Aye.
JP Kuzinski.
Aye.
Motion passes. I saw you, JP. We're supposed to go again back to the.
I did finish the supplemental appropriations.
I know.
Okay.
Guys, I, I know what I'm doing.
Oh, absolutely.
Councilor Rist? I just want to apologize for the people in the public. Apparently I didn't let people in on time and because that, because of that reason, I just want to ask to the council. I'm allowed to do it, but I want to be polite, I want to ask to the council. Is that okay with you guys to allow the public to participate one more time in the public speak time? If everybody's okay, I will ask for the people who join us for late because I will blame myself to allow you to come in on time. This is the time to talk and I see, and I'm really, I'm sorry if I mispronounce your name, Leanna?
Hi, um, so Jersey City Council, my name is Ayanna, you were close. I'm a student at East Hampton High School. Today, me and my peers, we come to this forum to bring attention of what are some of the microaggressions students and employees with ethnic hair has at the school, from touching our hair without consent to making fun of us by making comments towards our hair. We feel safe in this forum since we feel that you, Mr. Gomez, has ethnic roots, the same as us, and can really understand us and what we are asking. We ask from this body that an ordinance is created to protect us and the upcoming generations by requiring that all city employees take a training on microaggressions and explain the Crown Act that passed on July 26 of 2022 by the Massachusetts Governor Charlie Baker, signed into law the creating a respectful and open world for natural hair act, known as the Crown Act, prohibiting discrimination against employees, students, and other individuals based on their natural or protective hairstyle. I want to thank my peers who are raising their hands online and the people in the chambers that are standing up and saying of support to us. Thank you.
Thank you, Ayanna, and I'm sorry. Anyone in from the public? Seeing on, councilor Rist. Kuzinski?
Yes, Mr. President. I, I just would like to say, would you just, since the students may have just tuned in, re-explain the, our policy, the council's policy on responding to any statements?
Thank you, councilor. That's a, that's a great idea. Because police speak time is no, we don't have the topic on the agenda for the purpose of the open meeting law. We are no, we are not allowed to answer today. We only take the concerns or questions from the public and eventually if we add something to the agenda, we, we can discuss it. That's the reason we are not allowed to answer. I wish we can answer, but we are not allowed to. Thank you, Councilor Kuzinski. Councilor Rist? To finish the new business?
Thank you, Mr. President. I have a few more supplemental appropriations from the Department of Public Works. The first supplemental appropriation requested is for $150,000 to be transferred from retained earnings, $150,000, to be transferred to the water department, light, heat, and power, $150,000. This appropriation will provide funding to cover electricity costs for the water department. The water department electricity budget is facing a shortfall due to reallocated solar credits. The following is a supplemental appropriation of $300,000 to be transferred from enterprise retained earnings, $300,000, to be transferred to wastewater and treatment plant, light, heat, and power, $150,000, to be transferred to wastewater treatment plant sludge disposal, $150,000. This appropriation will provide funding to cover treatment, chemical heating, and sludge disposal costs increases as well as the electricity costs that were formerly funded via solar energy credits. The next is a supplemental appropriation of $50,000 to be transferred from enterprise retained earnings, $50,000, to be transferred to the, in from enterprise Cherry Street project, $50,000. The appropriation will provide contingency funding for the Cherry Street reconstruction project. The next is the amount requested is $20,000 from free cash, to be transferred to the revenue electric bike revolving fund, $10,000. The revenue EV charging bike department revolving fund, $10,000. This appropriation will provide funding to cover electricity and membership costs for the city's electric vehicle and bicycle charging stations. The next appropriation is $50,000 to be transferred from free cash, $50,000, to be transferred to FY '23 miscellaneous building repairs, $50,000. This appropriation will fund various maintenance needs at city hall and the public safety complex, including parking lot crack ceiling, landscaping, stair tread replacement installation, and multiple plumbing repairs of both buildings. The next is a supplemental appropriation of $125,000 to be transferred from free cash, $125,000, to be transferred to the fiscal year '23 surplus building services, $125,000. This appropriation will fund various maintenance needs at the three vacant elementary school properties, including plumbing, heating, repairs, and elevator maintenance and repair. This funding will also cover expenses incurred to secure 75 Oliver Street building rentalization costs and alarm system monitoring. Following is a supplemental appropriation requested of $30,000 to be transferred to enterprise retained earnings, $30,000, to be transferred to enterprise Union Street corridor, $30,000. This appropriation will fund engineering and construction phase services for the Union Street reconstruction project. I believe I've got them all. I would like to move that those, the aforementioned appropriations be sent to finance committee for review and a public hearing be set for March 15 in these chambers at 6:15.
Second.
We have a motion and a seconds to move the seven supplemental appropriations to the finance committee and to schedule a public hearing. Any further discussion? Seeing on, Barbara.
Brad Riley.
Aye.
Dan Rist.
Aye.
Owen Zaret.
Aye.
Connie Dunham.
Aye.
Salem Derby.
Aye.
Omar Gomez.
Aye.
JP Kuzinski.
Aye.
Tom Peak.
Aye.
Motion passes. Councilor Rist?
May I ask, Barbara, did I get them all?
I think so.
I think I did.
Yes.
I just want to make sure I didn't forget one.
I was doing checkmarks, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Got it. So we do everything that we have in the agenda for today's meeting. Today, we are not going to adjourn here. We're going to have a secret session. The city council will discuss a necessary vote to meet in a secret session to discuss the possible resolution of claim made by the South Halle Electric Light Department related to the work it claims to have performed in the city. Holding discussion, holding discussion related to the, to shell potential claim against the city may have detrimental effect on the city litigation and negotiation positions. So we're going to move to the, oh, and we will not reconvene our open session after the conclusion of the secret session. I will take a motion to go to the secret session.
I move that the city council go into executive session to discuss the city's litigation position and potential settlement of South Hadley Electric Light Department's claim against the city.
We have a motion and a seconds to move to a secret session. Any further discussion? Barbara?
Omar Gomez.
Aye.
Salem Derby.
Aye.
Dan Rist.
Aye.
Tom Peak.
Aye.
Owen Zaret.
Aye.
Brad Riley.
Aye.
Connie Dunham.
Aye.
JP Kuzinski.
Aye.
We're going to move to the back room.
We have time back to the back.
Take five minute breaks.
Okay.